...for Walton City Council Work Session. Our first item on the agenda tonight is a Transportation System Plan Update, or TSP, update led by Cody Fields. Welcome, Cody. And Mike will throw oranges and tomatoes at you from behind or something.
Well, thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Now, tonight we have a Transportation System Plan Update from our consultant team members from Farron Pierce and Alta Planning and Design. We've done a lot of work since the last time we were here for an update back in January, and there's a lot of exciting things coming up. So, without further ado, I want to introduce Brianna Calhoun from Farron Pierce and Katie Celine from Alta Planning and Design joining us remotely, and they're going to run the presentation and facilitate the discussion tonight.
Thank you so much. Really happy to be here today. So, key things we're going to talk about today would be kind of the components of a TSP, going back to when we first talked to you all in August, I think, of last year, kind of running back through where we've been and the next steps moving forward. Then really give up some background on how we're thinking about building the project list and what components are going into that discussion and that thought process. And then want to make sure that we spend lots of time kind of having an open discussion about projects and your priorities for how we're thinking about projects and making sure that we're getting all the projects on the list that we should be thinking about. And then we'll just wrap it up and talk about the next steps coming up this summer. So, to just go back and do another overview on just what we're doing for this TSP. So, some of the key milestones were, first off, doing kind of an analysis of the existing and future conditions, understanding what's on the ground today, what's planned in future plans, both locally and throughout the region. Then thinking about transportation goals. How do we want to really prioritize the transportation system? How do we think about the goals and performance measures that we'll be using to plan out this work? And how that fits into the city's other goals around housing, around parks and recreation, around all these other pieces that are tangential to the TSP update? And now we're getting into kind of that middle piece, the programs, project list, and prioritization. So, I'll go into a little more detail as we're walking through the presentation. But in essence, taking what we know that's here and what we're planning for, thinking about that all in the context of the goals that we've all discussed and agreed upon, and then using those pieces to really plan out the project list and then prioritize those projects. We'll also be doing then an analysis of kind of funding availability and a projection of funding for the next 20 years over the life of the plans, so that we can put the funding piece with the project piece and come up with a prioritized project list. And then going into a draft plan that puts all of those pieces together in a hopefully really easy-to-understand and straightforward manner that will then be coming back to you all for council adoption. So, amongst all of this, as we've been working through all of these key steps, outreach has been obviously a key priority. And so Katie is going to just talk through kind of what we've done so far on the public engagement and then where we're going next with those phases.
Yeah, thanks, Brianna. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Perfect, thank you. Yes, so we are getting all organized and excited to launch our next public engagement phase for the project, coming up this July through August. And so the, what we'll be going back to the public with at this stage is sharing the project list and pointing people towards kind of remaining key questions that we have for them about how we're being, essentially how we're being responsive to what we heard in the first rounds of engagement and taking this to the like actual like, okay, what are we going to build? What are we gonna put together moving forward? And so the activities that we have planned for this stage are a survey, an online option to share project ideas and connect those dots back to what we heard in Phase 1 and 2, and then confirm that we're fulfilling the vision that we've heard so far. We're going to be at a couple different events. The Viva Twolton event, Music in the Park, one or two of those events, and potentially the National Night Out event. We're still kind of confirming exactly which three in there we'll be at. And then we're organizing an open house workshop, August 8th, that will be at the library, a more like in-depth opportunity to walk people through the maps, and we'll have some activities to hopefully make that pretty understandable for folks and get feedback that way. And then we're doing a series of focus groups, continuing with the same folks who we gathered, working with the community engagement liaisons as a partner in this. So, we have groups that we assembled in the first and second phase, and then we'll be bringing them back, members of the Latino community, BIPOC, and renters and transit riders, in three different groups. And then a few other kind of small group conversations. We're talking about meeting with some folks from our frequent bike riders, the community, to share the bike network and get some in-depth feedback and a couple other options there.
Thanks, Katie.
Back to you.
Yeah. So then to kind of go over how we're thinking about building this project list, a lot of different components going into this first big messy list that has every opportunity, every idea, all of the different things that we could possibly build feasible or maybe not so feasible, that we can start to work through. So, first off, are thinking about kind of our different modal networks. What's the network for bicycles? What's the network for pedestrians? Is that sidewalks? Is that crossings? Is that trails? What are these different networks and how do we want to set some sort of level of service for vehicles, looking at congestion hotspots? So, all of those pieces, thinking about these complete networks for each mode. Where then are we seeing gaps in those systems? You know, where do we need to fill a sidewalk gap? Where are we seeing, you know, transit need at a particular transit stop, wherever it may be? So, those gaps are all being put on this list. Also, thinking about projects that are in the last TSP that maybe haven't been built yet. Should those still continue on the list? Do they need to be removed for whatever reason? Thinking about planned projects on things like the Parks and Rec Master Plan, on the regional transportation plan, all these other plans that have already been done and planning efforts, pulling those together. Safety, obviously, a major focus, so making sure we're hitting any of the safety hotspots that we've seen. And then also, again, in all of this outreach, we've gathered so much great feedback from folks. So, thinking about from you all, from the CAC, the community engagement, and the outreach that we did in the fall, pulling all of those pieces together, put this big list. Next steps will be, as we're pulling this all together, then thinking about how to prioritize those projects, how to kind of then match that up with the funding availability out into the future. So, for the next 20 years, kind of a projection of what the funding would look like. And then building a prioritized list that fits within those funding constraints, and that would be your kind of final constrained project list that we would get to at the end of the plan. So then to go into a little more in-depth, that's the kind of the types of projects that we're thinking through for each mode, as you're seeing on the longer list. Katie's going to walk through the pedestrian and bicycle ones, and then I'll jump into the transit and the vehicle ones.
Perfect, thank you. So, for pedestrian and bike projects, our vision from what we've heard from council and from the community over the course of the project so far is that we're really looking to build out a network of safe, direct, low-stress routes for people to get where they need to go without a vehicle. And so that includes both the pedestrian and bike networks and the projects that make up those networks. For the pedestrian projects, kind of at the policy level, we're building from the city's current standards to fill sidewalk gaps and enhance pedestrian facilities in climate-friendly areas. So, that is going to be essentially kind of the downtown Twolton area, and then meet crossing standards. So, we've added some specificity about crossing standards and where we want to fill gaps in between marked crossings across the city. Next slide, please. And so, for the proposed pedestrian network that council received, we have projects organized into sidewalks, trails, and crossings, and we've identified locations where there's new marked crossings where none exist currently, and recommended upgrades to existing crossings. So, maybe adding a signal or an RFP where there's already an existing crosswalk. And so, we arrived at these projects by essentially applying the policies to our existing data and the existing, just mapping out where there are gaps, where there are all of the existing RFPs and crossings across the city. Next slide, please. And then just to give a couple of examples here, the, so, one is the 65th Avenue Pedestrian and Bicycle Bridge. So, that would be across the river and just providing like some more connectivity for people walking and biking, big idea. And then the other one would be adding a more substantial and enhanced pedestrian facility over the Sagert Street Bridge. And so that would build on the interim improvement that took place as a part of the bond program. Next slide, please. And then for the bicycle project list, again, the plan is for a connected network of bicycle facilities to provide safe, low-stress, direct, and a comfortable experience for people of all ages and abilities. And when we say all ages and abilities, we are kind of trying to conjure this, an image of this graphic on the right-hand side of the slide with just all different types of people riding bikes for transportation, for recreation, to move goods around, and not just, you know, the most confident and fastest cyclists. And, uh, since, next slide, please. And so, the project, the bike network and project list that we're working on is really exciting, and it's a new step for the city to have that kind of officially documented. So, we started out by designing an ideal network of routes that balance the options for people who want like a really direct, direct connection by bike that might be more comfortable on a busier street, with options for those who need quieter, kind of less direct routes that are more separated from cars. And so, the network built on Twolton's amazing trail network and kind of reimagining how those can be used for transportation connections and like where there's another segment or a cut-through that's needed in order to make that more functional. And so, the network and the project list include trail projects, so kind of separated off-street or side paths along roads, and then bike boulevards and on-street bike facilities. So, next slide. So, just to give you kind of a picture of what each of those are, the, yeah, some images of separated off-street trail path or bridge, you can picture those, lots of those in Twolton. Then bike boulevards, which are kind of already quiet neighborhood streets that need some wayfinding, some pavement markings, and maybe a few kind of traffic calming elements, but really don't need much, just some wayfinding to help people know how to get from point A to point B by bike. And then on-street bike facilities, your classic bike lane, but with this plan really moving towards as much separation from cars as possible, so buffered or with like physical protection potentially. Next slide. And then just a couple of kind of example, big idea projects. The Nyberg Creek Trail, an I-5 crossing would, yeah, overcome a major barrier, just more permeability across I-5 and continuing the trail. And then completing Boons Ferry Road and filling the gap, building on the buffered bike lanes from the Twolton and Ford Bond Program project and get that kind of seamless connection from Wilsonville to Pettard. Next slide.
Thanks, Katie. So then to talk about the transit network, we're thinking about this in kind of three different tiers. First would be the priority corridors that are really focused around frequent service and moving people where they need to go kind of quickly and directly. Then areas where we would want more regular service at a regular, you know, timing so that people can rely on that, but maybe not as frequent. And then areas that might have more flexible or innovative services that we could think about that might not support a fixed route, but could use some sort of on-demand service or some other creative way of serving people still with transit. And then the projects are really focused on amenities at the stops. So, do we need more shelters? Do we need lighting? Do we need trash cans and benches to make things comfortable for people to wait? Pairing with the bicycle and pedestrian network, thinking about access to transit and making sure people have safe crossings to be able to get to the direction that they need to go if their direction they need is across the street, but they can't get to it, and being able to really get to the stops. And then also, in a couple of key locations, kind of bottleneck and relief can also be a serious one for transit as well, and thinking about reliability of transit so it stays on time. So, kind of using that as a project potentially too. And then advocating for service changes or improvements with the transit agencies. And so, really pushing that forward and having those conversations and making sure we're writing down, this is what we want and this is what we would like to advocate for, so we can then use that to have those conversations and continue to show the support that we want for transit service in the region too. And so, a couple of examples of those. The first one is thinking about making the West Station a real central focus downtown and improving the amenities and really improving the wayfinding and making sure that it feels like it's a real good connection for all of those different pieces. And so that would be something that falls a little more into the city's control around some of the things that can be done. The second one there is working with Ride Connection to, we heard from folks that being able to provide two-way service on the shuttle routes rather than a single-way shuttle where you might get on one stop, you might only have to go backwards one stop, but instead you have to ride the entire loop all the way around can be just a, you know, certainly a sticky point for folks. So, again, advocating for that service change and figuring out ways that we can help to promote changes that will make things more convenient for folks to be able to ride transit. And then thinking about vehicle projects. These fall into a couple of kind of overarching buckets when we're thinking about vehicles and safety. One is thinking about how we bring roadway facilities up to standard. Certainly lots of places that can use some smaller scale improvements to really bring them up to the city's standard and make them feel more comfortable for everyone. Again, thinking about safety improvements, really looking at where we're seeing collisions, where we're seeing conflicts with pedestrians and bicycles, and finding ways that we can really feel like we're improving those outcomes and accommodating everyone. And then certainly congestion bottlenecks and signal improvements, things at the intersections that we can do to help still move traffic kind of easily and smoothly and hit some of those pain points that people are feeling, so that we can find places to move the needle on those too. And then one that I don't have on here, but certainly is a conversation as we're talking about the pedestrian bridges and stuff too, is just that you are very constrained by the river and by I-5, and so thinking through if there are ways to provide more connections to be able to get over those barriers and pass those, so that people can connect to the surrounding cities more easily, is certainly something that we're contemplating as well as we're thinking through this. So, two examples on the list here are, we have heard from folks definitely on Graham's Ferry Road, really wanting to bring that up to roadway standards and making that feel comfortable for folks. And then another kind of big idea project would be, you know, certainly we've heard Twolton Sherwood Road and Boons Ferry, that intersection is a major pain point for folks. So, could we think really creatively about completely separating and putting Twolton Sherwood completely over the railroad in Boons Ferry or some other creative solution rather than a smaller piecemeal turnpocket or something along that line? So, small projects, big projects, really thinking through the whole possibility, and then also hearing from you, hearing from the community, what feels like it would be the right step. So, okay, I think, yeah, okay. I really, I know we've talked a lot, given a lot of background, but would love to open the floor and hear from you all, kind of what's important to you. So, a couple of prompts, don't have to be the ones you answer, are kind of what would be your top couple of projects that you would love to see on this list? Also, what just types of projects do you think should be prioritized? Big categories of, you know, crossings should really be the top concern versus, you know, transit amenities, whatever it may be. And then are we missing anything here? There are ones that we really want to make sure that we're, are on the list that you're so far not seeing that we've been talking about, so that we can make sure we don't miss those.
All right.
Thank you very much for all the work. And I am curious about if, when we're looking at the area that's the climate-friendly area or, I'm just wondering if there's data from the last mile use for the scooters? And if we see where people are actually hitting the scooters to get to work or wherever they're getting? I'm just curious about that data. And then the other thing that I'm wondering about that might not be on this list, I love the idea of anything to do with the railroad crossing, by the way. And I know it's a big lift, but I think it's worth it. When we were working with the Arts Committee and looking at how the Lake of the Commons is going to be a little bit more visible when the art goes in, I'm just wondering with, as we think about the downtown area, if there's any availability to open up like a walking mall that would maybe come from the freeway side so that people could see it, maybe have something that would connect visibly, like a different color paint on the road or whatever, and just some creativity around that idea around entranceways to the downtown area. I know things are going to change, that's going to take time, but I know with the parks changes, that incorporating and integrating those opportunities, I think is really important. So, I could just really see it easily, and it could be something really cool and something a little bit more modern, what people have been looking for. And I think we have a head start with that. And then the other thing too is with the new boat ramp, like how is the connectivity with that? Yeah. I guess the one other thing from a personal place would be thinking about more turn lanes from Titon onto Twolton Sherwood Road. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate all the work.
Thank you. And I, would you like me to, I can jump in and answer for you? Yeah, just a couple of things, thank you, really appreciate those. The scooter data, that's an interesting one that we hadn't dug into yet, but I'd be interested in seeing what we could do and what data we could get from that program to be able to inform this, so thank you for that. Yeah, we'll definitely be looking at the railroad crossing and seeing what we can put into the plan and what we hear from folks. And then we had been talking about kind of placemaking in the downtown, kind of around the Commons, and just how we could really make that feel like a really vibrant placemaking space. So, love to hear that. And, yeah, got all that done, so I really appreciate it, yeah.
And then just any, also, any ways, I know we have some gateways to our city, but there's a lot that we, that aren't that visible, so as we're thinking about design, thinking about ways of notifying and welcoming people to the city.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilperson Pratt, then Councilwoman Reyes. Okay, you wrote first.
Thank you. Great presentation, and I was honored to be in one of the community meetings that happened probably about a month and a half ago or so. And there was a lot of great feedback and ideas from the community, so I really enjoyed that meeting. We did talk a little bit during that meeting, when it comes to that ride share or the, that connection bus, they talked about signage, so having signage of, here's this, this is a bus stop, or this is a ride share stop, and it comes at this time, or something that will let people know that, don't walk away, there will be somebody coming here picking you up at a certain time. So, that's one of the ideas of having, encouraging people to get on the bus and travel around town. The other thing that they, I also would like to see more in that meeting, it seemed like there were a lot of us that were from the south part of Twolton, maybe a little bit from the east side, and a little bit, but we didn't get a lot from like Jergens Park area. So, maybe if we get more information from that area, there were, in fact, I don't think, there were about 15 or 20 of us in that meeting, and not one of us were part of that area that I think we should also equitably look what the needs are in that area. The, and I like the community neighborhood meetings, when we start doing that public outreach. I think that's really important because people focus on their community when they're in their community versus going to like bringing them here. They forget what's out there. I mean, I do, I'm speaking for myself in that one, because I always remember when I'm at, in my community. And one thing that sparked my thought when Councilor Brooks brought up the scooters, I was at a small, similar area in Massachusetts that, in those commuters parking areas, like the one by TJ Maxx area, they, you can park your car, and then sometimes I, I thought about this because I was there, and they had like a line of the scooters that if you wanted to go to the next shopping center or like, you didn't have to get in your car and then drive to that shopping center. Instead, you can get one of those and then look around and come back, but you park your car in one place and then you can just get in those scooters and then drive around. I mean, I know we have it, but it, they're like, we have the scooters, but they're like all over town, but if we have like a designated area, I just thought, when she was bringing it up, I'm like, oh, I remember seeing this in that town, and it was a small town similar to this one. So, I explore those kinds of commuter parkings where you can park, and then, like I, I tell you, I shuffle around here. So, I go to TJ Maxx, and I get in my car, and then I go to Home Goods, and then, you know, come back again. So, having something like that would be a good. be a good, good way of reducing traffic and cars out there, so, that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilperson Sacco.
Thank you. These are all great projects and thank you for all the work that you've done. But to answer your question, what would be the top three, I guess, sort of broad strokes? One would be the Tuolton Sherwood and the railroad there. Two would be improvements in transit all around and making it more accessible to the people who live and work in Tuolten. And then third would be on-street bicycle facility, I mean, that's definitely a barrier of mine personally of why I don't bike more because it's terrifying in a lot of places. And I think if it was accessible to more folks, so those would be my top three just based on what I currently think would impact the most people. But as far as your second question about prioritization, I think it'd be really helpful to have, and I know that you're doing this, but like to have the data behind it, like how many people is it going to impact? And how many people is it going to impact, what, you know, the costs are, all of those things to sort of then help prioritize. The second question's really hard to, hard to answer without that data. And then I guess lastly, personally, I love all the pedestrian projects on here, if I was going to be selfish, that would be, that would be my priority, but again, I want the projects that will impact the most people of our community.
Thank you.
Councilperson Hillier.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, all the work and outreach and continued work. So some of the things that I thought about in hearing my fellow councilors and reading through is, so my, the three top would be anything that is going to improve traffic, like, and I would even, the railroad project is really interesting and important to me, but I would propose that the railroad's the one that goes up and over, not the street, because you can widen a, I mean, what happens if we need to widen the street at some point and it's up over? It's a lot, a lot different to widen overpass and trains, I know nothing about, so it seems easier to just give that answer and maybe it's more complicated, but I'd like us to at least consider that. And so I also wonder, for me, what might be missing, and I apologize I'm going out of order, is a real understanding with Ride Connection and some of our other community partners. I know that a lot of our schools run after-school programs and different things and is there any inner sort of intersection, you know, that we can help get kids to and from events or different things? I mean, parking is kind of a nightmare at the high school, how can we, how can we help with that? How can we help get kids out of Ubers and different things in the morning as they're going to elementary, middle school? That sort of thing, is there some way that we can, can work with our partners to look at that? And as far as the bikes, I want to start my statement by saying I am not anti-cyclist or anything, but I really think that you, a community has to have a real culture shift and I don't think just building things for people to use, you know, to, here's, here's a bike lane. There are kids learning to drive vehicles that are far outweigh a bicyclist. We have different, you mentioned different skill levels of bicyclists and I could not agree more because the more skilled bicyclists seem to forget that there are rules of the road and they just plow through things. So, like, I'm very concerned about the safety of our community to just implement bike lanes and not have, make sure that we're doing the other side of the work. And I get that this is a transportation plan and I'm not trying to, but I do think that that is a massive culture shift for our community. I think we're up for it, I think it would be a great thing, but I just want to put that out kind of as a warning. And so, yeah, I think that is it, but anything that would lessen congestion and I'm always, anything that can build a bridge over can be two stories, double-sided parking lot, like anything that we can do to build up instead of out, I am all for, especially, and Councilor Brooks mentioned the water access, but I'd also like to think about the parks land potentially across from the SEPA project and the bridge over or a tunnel under, like, right? Like, how do we not stop traffic? I really, those are, those are priority things to me. We hear about Boons Ferry, we hear Tuolton Sherwood Road, you know, those areas, so those stick points. So those are my thoughts.
I just want to add a little bit on the, I do ride the bikes and I tend to ride the bikes, my bike during this kind of weather more than during the eight months that it's dark. So, it is, I, the reason why not, because I don't, I love riding my bike, but because of the, it's dark and it's scary and I don't know who's out there on the road that may not see me, but I think also let's, let's, I'm with Councilor Hiller when, I'm not, obviously not anti-bike because I ride my bike, but let's also think of our weather here in Oregon and the days are dark and may not be safe. If we invest too much on certain things, then it may not be, it may not pertain to our elements here in this part of the world, so I just thought of that.
Thank you.
Councilperson Pratt.
Wow. A lot of what I would, wanted to say is covered, like, I would like that, the railroad crossing, but the whole, that whole core area to make it very, you know, better for traffic, vehicle traffic, but also for pedestrians and bicyclists to have a safe route through that area. The, I'm a bike rider, my comment on the bikes, I would love to see nice, continuous, safe paths throughout our whole city, but if you're going to focus on an area, it would be those safe routes to school, so kids can walk and bike to school. What else? I don't know what else. Oh, and Ride Connection, yeah, definitely with, especially with Lam coming in and everything, I just think, I'm kind of, I think we're all a little frustrated thinking we're going to have access from outer cities coming in anytime soon, but if we could work on a, like Santa Fe, New Mexico, I don't know if you've ever been there, but they have these shuttle buses that you, you don't need to have a car in that town and that would be great. And my last thing, the missing project to me, and I think this is a tough one, but it's the South end of Boons Ferry, that's what I hear the most about from our community members because it's congested and I know it's difficult because it goes from a city to a county to an ODOT road, so, but I think that's a huge pain point for our community.
Councilperson, Councilperson Brooks.
As everyone was talking too, I like the safe routes to school and I know there's also data for people that are working on biking and alternate, and I'm curious too about adding safe routes to parks in that thinking, because I think some of the connectivity that we've been talking about and not even just for us to be able to get around, but visually for the city to work and function better, is about where we go. And so we go to the parks, we, you know, we want it safe at the hospital, we want it safe at the schools. And so I think thinking through with the, with the parks too is a good way and that way we could really help with connectivity and then thinking about safety that way too of, we could have some, you know, more strong, safe ways instead of like commuters that are really okay with the, with the biking. I feel like I have one more, but that's it. Oh, and then just the modern practices for wherever we're building out new, you know, just being mindful.
All right. I'm going off script. All right, imagine that. I have a question first. So why is the West Station going to be a central focus when it runs very rarely? I mean, it's Monday through Friday during business hours, other than that, there's nothing there, other than Ride Connection as a central connection point of their routes? So, why?
Great question. The thinking was that it, location-wise, you know, you've got it right, they're adjacent to the downtown, you do have the West and then you do have a couple of buses that stop right there from TriMet and you have the Ride Connection, so facilitating those connections across the services, so if someone's coming from out of the city into the city could come and then connect into Ride Connection and use that. But also there's the, the space and the potential to also connect in other modes, if you made that a scooter hub, if you made that a really great bike parking facility, some, some opportunities to build that out with the space that you have. So is the thought, but if you don't feel like that's a viable or a useful option, that's great feedback to hear too.
No, I think it's, you know, because it is in a terrific location, it's just like you're saying, it shouldn't be West-focused, it should be the other things around the West-focused.
That's true, okay, we could rename the station area. But also thinking about like gateways, like can you then really make that a gateway to the downtown and direct people across the road?
And then, as people mentioned, Ride Connection, the ability to get more routes, you know, I love the two-way service, but it's also a route issue, as Councilperson Pratt mentioned, you know, getting it out, it's doing a good job into the manufacturing industrial area, but I think it might have to go even deeper and more frequent when Lam expands. It's also, I hear from residents that they'd love to have a little bit more access to it. Everyone points out to Forest Grove, you know, the Grove, Grove Link, how it works at Forest Grove. Graham's Ferry, isn't Graham's Ferry a Washington County facility? Most of the way?
I think so, my guess.
So that would, would that have to be something on a future M-Step project versus the city taking it on by itself? I mean, I like it on the plan.
Yeah, yeah.
We want it on the plan.
We want it on the plan. So it's within the city's planning boundary, so we do have the ability to put projects like that on there, just like we have brought the ability to put Tuolton Sherwood Road on there even if it's a county facility, but it also points towards working with ODOT, working with the counties, et cetera, to put that on the list and then get, moving forward to work together, yeah.
Get TDT money and stuff like that, okay? Got to dust this one off, Southwest Corridor. Is that because it's on the last TSP? Isn't that going to be on this one? I mean, we should probably keep it in the conversation.
Yes. Yeah, it should be on the list, so we do have the Southwest Corridor still planned on there for transit. It is in the regional transportation plan that they just updated, so following that we, we made sure to keep it in there.
Okay. And then the climate area, you know, we've got a lot of plans, you know, on paper right now with the Cora, I mean, there was preliminary designs of like what Main Street would look like and building design and stuff like that, so I'm just making sure that the TSP incorporates the future Cora, you know, planning that's going to start maybe in five or six years so that they overlap and they're in sync. On sidewalks, so the sidewalks, it was hard to see the graphic, so isn't it, is it Calarni? So on the sidewalk plan, are we just focusing on the sidewalks that are major connectors or, you know, deep down on like Calarni doesn't have sidewalks? Is that something we're looking at or we're just focusing on routes like parks, schools, facilities?
Katie, I'm going to send that one to you if you want to talk about the background on the sidewalk discussion.
Yes, so Tuolten is extremely fortunate with having a very robust sidewalk network, so we, in the project list, generally have projects identified for all sidewalk gaps and would prioritize those like busier, yeah, higher traffic, higher speed streets and like lower traffic streets would be less of a priority probably, but ultimately those are like all projects that would be on the list.
They'd still be in the plan because, you know, ideally, as long as it's in our plan as a grant opportunity, a funding opportunity to do, you know,
Exactly.
Especially like CDVG does a lot of sidewalk infill, so.
And a lot of like working with developers where, where having it, yeah, exactly, having it in the plan is going to be helpful to leverage those opportunities as they come up.
Okay. All right. Good. And then we've got, some of the seniors are always poking on me about design standards for sidewalks. Do they need to be looked at? Because they're specifically mentioned that sidewalks need to be wider today than some of our standards, that the newer standards across the US, there's, they're a few feet wider to allow, you know, multiple people to cross, you know, from each other and someone on a wheelchair and stuff like that. So, that's one, an idea of, is that in the TSP to look at are design standards for sidewalks? And finally, our favorite person, our favorite organization to pick on is TriMet. On TriMet, you know, I'd like to focus in, I mean, TriMet's got their suggested routes, we know they're, they're coming, but a discussion Mike and I had in DC is how about we come up with some routes that we want to see and get them in the TSP? This way we'll have certain folks not seeing, if you don't ask for it, you're not going to get it and if you're not, if you're very general, you're not going to get it, let's be specific and just throw out some ideas on what routes we think would be beneficial to the community. We hear from the people in our community where they'd like to have a bus, you know, it might not be the greatest idea in the world, but at least get it in there so that we can have that conversation with TriMet. So when they come back to me and say, well, you didn't mention anything in your TSP about routes, I can go, here we go, this is what we're looking for.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, and, and then making sure, of course, I know they do, but TriMet and Ride Connection coordinate, you know, routes, schedules, so one can feed off the other, so someone doesn't have to wait, you know, 20 minutes to go, to get off the 76 to wait for the red line to come by. I know it'd be ideal world, there'd be a short connection, but, you know, whatever we can do. I think there's a, I think Ride Connection or TriMet has an app that can help you with that kind of stuff, if they can feed their routes into TriMet and so they can have a, you know, planned trip kind of thing.
To your question on the, what routes we want, do we have data that should, like, do we have over 90% of the people come to our city to work and a lot of the same percentage of us go out of the city? Like where people are going to work and where people are coming from, so we could really look at that when saying where we need the routes?
We do have that.
The Chamber, when they did their study, has, you know, where everybody's coming from and going to.
Yep, yeah, we do have some from the census too, to be able to back that up.
Councilperson Brooks. And that was my list.
And I really appreciate the conversation too and we're trying to get people moving around the city in alternate ways or getting the public transportation. I also think about making sure there's planning for enough shade, whether it's trees or whether it's those covers, just because there's more heat and more rain and things like that, so just if we're going to have people out in the elements more in a, in a changing environment that we have, things to take care of them. And I always think about water. I remember when Joelle was on council, she always talked about advocating for those cutouts in the road because we already have the backups for buses and thinking about ways to keep things moving and not congesting traffic, to really advocate for those things. And then a lot of people that need those services are people's differing abilities, so I don't like looking at bus stops that don't have a place to sit down and the people also throw their cigarette butts there, it's the most cigarette butts of everywhere, of a place of the cigarette butt, you know, just those kind of things that are, that make things livable, yeah. And there's so many cool things they're doing now too.
Ripping off Councilor Brooks, the other thing was benches. That's the other thing I hear, we hear a lot about folks that there's not a lot of benches in our sidewalk network, especially on the popular routes for folks to sit down and maybe in that, those sidewalk updated standards that we have space for benches while people walk, they can take a break and, you know, tie their shoe, get their breath, sit under the tree and have some shade, yeah, but that's the other thing, yeah, thanks for triggering that in my head. Anything else? All right. I think you got a couple more slides, I think?
Yeah, just a couple, oops. I think we lost our slides. Well, thank you all for the, the great suggestions, we were taking lots of notes. Last slide. So, next steps. So we'll be taking this feedback, wrapping that into our project list, we'll then be going out to the public as Katie was talking about, as well as to our CAC group in July and using that to just gather a little bit more information about folks' priorities, their top big projects, as well as if we again missed anything, we don't want to, you know, leave something off the list. And then starting to think through that prioritization piece of how do we really see which projects come to the top of the list and make sure it's a balanced list that has all modes, that thinks about equity, that thinks about serving people all over the city and not missing out on particular neighborhoods, things like that. So really building that into that. And then at the same time also starting some of those other pieces like the funding availability to tie those all together, so have to build something that's mostly feasible, right? But we would really love, so you've got the, we didn't obviously go through step-by-step all of the projects, there's a lot on that list, but you all have the maps and the project lists that we have so far, would love if you have the time and want to go through that. Um, would love if you have the time and want to go through that in more detail for, um, you to do that and provide follow-up comments, um, if you think that we are still missing something. Um, but would love to get those comments by about the end of next week, so that we can make sure we have all the materials together to go out to the public and have time to get that prepped, so.
I do have one item to add.
Sure.
As we're gathering feedback from Twelton residents, um, I know that we've been not successful in getting good feedback on other initiatives that we're trying to, uh, gather information from. I, I received some information from Tigard, our, our other city, they include, they include their information on the utility bill that's mailed out. Are, are we doing something like that as well? Cause I find it to be very useful, cause not everybody subscribes to the no-paper transaction and, I, I see big messages from the mayor of Tigard in, in the utility bills with a big flyer in it. I don't know if, if, if that's our plan to do something like that as well.
Katie, remind me, I think that we put that out in the first round of engagement.
Yes, we, we did, and we, um, can do that again this round, certainly.
Especially for the open house.
Yes, thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you, and, um, yeah, any, you know, any of you can certainly please spread the word too. Um, we'll be putting out information on, there's the tweltontsp.com website, it'll be on the city's official website too. Um, but anything you can do to spread that word amongst your own groups of people would be fantastic, too.
We'll be putting something in the newsletter as well in July, so definitely looking at as many resources to get the word out for the public engagement as we can.
Yeah, we, we got a lot of nice feedback about the log signs in the first round, so I think we'll be able to put those back out, um, for this next round, too.
Anything else? Counselor, we also do, any flyers that go out in the utility bill, we put on the online system as well. So if someone has the online access, they see it there as well as anybody that gets a paper. Well, thank you for spending time with us tonight.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cody. All right, next up on the agenda for tonight is an overview of upcoming capital projects with Mike, Mr. McCarthy. Now Cody can throw stuff at you. You have the beard? He looks way younger now.
You know, it's, it's been like almost a month, but I still like, how did my chin get so small? So, uh, this, so we were talking about five projects that are coming up. Uh, four of them are design projects that are just getting started, and then one is, last one's a construction project that's getting going. So it's our coming attractions coming soon to Twelton. And the first one is a reservoir pump station project. And it's a reservoir on our aquifer storage and recovery site, so it's in southwestern Twelton, right up in this area. And this has been part of our water master plan for a long time. Will also include a pump station to pump water from the B level up to the C level. And really helps us out with resiliency by having a reservoir in this part of town and the ability to serve the homes around it directly from it with the pump station. So this project is just starting the real design process, and we anticipate the design contract coming to you on consent agenda for the next meeting on the twenty-fourth. And we anticipate, uh, design taking about a year, a little longer. And then this could end up going to twenty-six construction if things go well. Uh, we anticipate it, for all the projects, we anticipate a lot of public conversation and really doing our best to go, you know, over and above to let people know what's happening, what's going on in their area. And where appropriate to give people input on what aspects or how we design the project.
Just, I wanna, just in case, does everyone know what ASR is? Just wanna make sure. Or for, for the viewing public, could you tell what an ASR is?
Thank you, uh, that's aquifer storage, ASR is aquifer storage and recovery. And it's basically where we're using, um, kind of existing natural space that's underground to hold water for us that we can then pump back out later. And this would also put an above-ground reservoir at that site.
Thanks.
Thank you, I'll have to put a dollar in the acronym, Joe. And, uh, the next project is a transportation project. Uh, where design is just getting started, a really conceptual design. And this is the intersections of sixty-fifth Avenue with Borland Road and Sagert Street. And we hear pretty frequently about traffic issues, um, developing or extending out from this area. We just received proposals from consultants wanting to do the design of this project with us. Five pretty reputable firms, so it'll be hard to pick just one. And, uh, the first phase would be conceptual design, probably through about the fall and the winter, getting to a, like, how do we fix this, um, kind of idea. There's a number of ideas that have been proposed, but we wanna take a good, hard look at it and traffic numbers, traffic study, and get to really what's gonna be the best solution. We also wanna talk to the people involved and some of the affected property owners and really get people's opinion for how best to try to address this issue. Adding to it, sixty-fifth is a county's road, so the eastern half is owned by Clackamas County, the western half is Washington County. Uh, so they will both be involved in the process. Clackamas may be looking to give away their half. And so there may be some discussions about jurisdiction, uh, later on as we get farther into the process on this. Over the next several months, you know, through fall and winters, we're working out a conceptual design. Once we get to something more specific, then we start talking dollars and costs and then how to fund it. And like, would a county be willing to give us some money if we'd be willing to take the road? So some of those discussions could be coming up. Um, could also be a potential candidate for county funding, possibly even state funding, depending on what happens with the freeways. But a lot of public communication throughout to really figure out how best to try to address the, uh, the issues there. Third project, uh, Nyberg Creek Area Storm Improvements. This is another big one that's been on our draft stormwater master plan for a long time and previous versions of the stormwater master plan. A lot of the issue stems right about here where Nyberg Creek crosses Martinazzi. And when that fills up and backs up onto Martinazzi itself, when it gets high enough, it backs up onto Twelton Sherwood Road. Uh, so we've identified a number of projects in this area, and then we see some other drainage issues along Boons Ferry as well. Again, this will start with a conceptual design, uh, through fall and winter about really how best to address the issues here. Uh, so a lot of things all coming together. One is just the creek, and the outfall from the culvert across the road is lower than the level of the creek. Uh, so how do we get water to flow uphill is what we're currently asking it to do. There's also a property here with a smaller oval, um, that was given to the city and is under city ownership that can be used for a stormwater, um, treatment, storage facility. Uh, so that could help us solve some of the, uh, other issues. Particularly if we can get some of the water that's flowing from this area over to this facility here, and then it doesn't go through the pipe under Martinazzi. So, this one is currently out for proposals, and we anticipate those in a couple of weeks. You know, a little bit of time to score, look at how much the consultants will charge us. And we anticipate a design contract coming from this one within a couple of months or so. And the next one, um, this is the Sayu Slaw Greenway, so it's west of Boons Ferry, a little bit north of the high school. And the, uh, this is kind of a drainage flow that goes along the greenway here, right along the pathway. And there's some places where it flows over the pathway on a pretty regular basis. And there's also opportunities to get in stormwater treatment to remove more of the pollutants before it flows into Hedges Creek. And then we have a couple of pipes, the one just above it, so coming from Boons Ferry and then down and under Sayu Slaw. And then the one down here, um, getting from the greenway down to Hedges Creek and the outlet, uh, that are both badly deteriorated. Or I call them bottomless pipes, and, um, that's kinda the part that's rested away with them. And so those become a problem if we don't address them. And so we're planning to replace those pipes along with some of the work within the greenway. This one, we anticipate releasing a request for proposals, um, within the next few weeks. So probably coming back late summer with a design contract, uh, for approval. And then looking through design in the fall and winter. And this is a little smaller project than some of the first ones we talked about, so we're gonna hope for construction in twenty-twenty-five. Uh, but that's assuming everything goes well. And, uh, the last project is the one that's, uh, starting construction within the next few weeks. And this is a sewer project on Martinazzi, south of Sagert. Uh, the existing sewer line comes down to here and then makes kind of a zigzag through the subdivision and through the Sandalwood property. It's too small to handle current demand and projected future demand, uh, so needs to be upsized. Uh, we really don't wanna have to upsize it during the zigzag going through, cause that would get very expensive and difficult. So the plan is to take a new sewer straight north along Martinazzi Avenue. That makes it really deep, because Martinazzi goes up a bit and comes down. Um, but in talking with contractors, they'd rather, much rather do that than have to weave between homes. So this will be starting construction within the next few weeks. And Martinazzi will need to be closed between Avery and Sagert for a couple of months, uh, this summer. We don't have the definite timeframe yet, uh, but it's likely to be early, mid-July, uh, through August. Uh, for the timeframe, we're closing Martinazzi. We will do some sewer work under traffic, and this may actually be where they start. Sewer projects typically start at the bottom and work their way up. And, um, so the road will be open, but traffic delays in the Sagert and Martinazzi intersection. This will include the paving of the traffic signal intersection area that we would've done a few years ago, but we didn't wanna do because we didn't wanna have to rip it up to put a sewer project through. Uh, will also include some additional paving to the east on Sagert to, uh, the west edge of the I-five bridge. Uh, and that'll be pavement management program funded. So using this one project to accomplish a couple of different, a few different, uh, needs and issues. And any questions? And we can always flip back to other slides if we need to.
So when it's closed for six months, where are those folks, like the apartment complex, where they do, how they're gonna get in and out?
So, everybody will have access to their property. So we're looking at about a two-month closure. And it'll depend on where the actual work zone is happening. It's because it's thirty feet deep for the sewer that, wow, we really can't fit it in and keep the road open. So, the closure will end up being between Avery and Sagert will be the hard closure. And then, or will be the closure and then what they call the hard closure, where you just can't get through, will be wherever the work zone is. So it'll be gradually moving to the south. So for a while, um, you know, at first, people will be able to get to the Sandalwood driveway from the south only and not the north. And then once the work gets south of that driveway, then they'll only be able to come in from the north instead of the south. And then, you know, Sandalwood has the other driveway over here. The apartment complex, uh, will be the same kind of a thing where the driveway will be open from the south um, for the first part until the work gets past the driveway, and then they'll have to come in from the north. And, you know, we'll be having to work with each of the, the neighbors, um, specifically on, okay, now come in from this way. Uh, like on Garden Corner Curves, the contractor had a couple of signs with flipping arrows where they would just, if they wanted them going one way, they just pleased the arrow that direction, and if they wanted them to go the other direction, they'd, you know, flip the arrow over. And that was how people would know which way to go out of their driveway in that case. This one, the timeframe should be quite a bit tighter, but I can still imagine something like that to help people know which way to go.
Okay, I'm just, you know, you know, obviously, working with the management companies for the condos and the apartments, and then, I'm assuming you're gonna mail stuff to individual mailboxes and, and, um, what about working with TVF and R, the emergency response folks, do they know when it's gonna happen?
Yeah, we'll be working with them as well. Uh, we've already reached out to the direct property owners, so the Sandalwood and the apartment complex and the church, to let them know this is coming, this is what's gonna be happening. Once, we anticipate getting specific dates in the next week or two about just really when the closure is planned. And at that point, uh, we'll be doing a mail-out blitz, and we have two different lists. One is the immediate adjacent neighbors, and then one is a wider community list to know about the closure and things like that. And the immediate neighbors will plan to tell more about, this, here's how you will specifically be impacted.
Can you have a, on the website, have like a special landing page or something that's updated from the construction company? So people know what's being made day-to-day or a few, every few days or something, just so people, cause things change.
Yeah.
You know, construction goes behind, and once the mailing goes out, you're pretty much, it goes stale. So, you know, I'd be looking forward to something where someone could look up real quickly, might be, be able to get out of my house today, and if I am, which way?
Yeah, and people should always be able to get out of their house. They're possibly a couple of times, like for a couple of hours, right, when we're paving across the driveway.
Okay.
And we'll plan to keep the website regularly updated. Uh, we prefer to have those coming from the city staff.
Yeah.
But working directly with the contractor or the inspector. So we kinda know what's getting posted, but.
Because like the updates you sent us during Twelton moving forward every week, those were pretty good, something like that.
Good, yeah, we'll plan to keep those kinds of updates going.
Others? Council Brooks?
And for that, um, just because we're dealing with it on Teton right now, to have the road close signs when they're closed all the way to the corner? Because I'll forget, even though I know it's closed and then I'm driving up, and I'm like, whoops, I gotta turn around. Um, I think that's really helpful. I had a question on the, um, the building out of the water, um, reservoir. And I know you're gonna do great community outreach on it. I just had a thought around, um, possibility of thinking through ideas around public art that's, has wide appeal. Because it's gonna really impact people's views. And, um, I, I know that, that people show up and have a lot of really great creative ideas, but I think that that's, you know, the kinda thinking I think around. The next one was the Borland, um, project. That one, I was curious, I know that we can, there can be grants to help us when it's near parks, which that is. But I didn't, I'm not sure if there's also grants available, um, at any level around the hospitals and medical.
We'll take a look for them.
Yeah, I would just think, uh, people with different ability, I just, I would think that that would be something and that we also, I know that Metro was really interested in all the emergency routes and things like that through the different places, so that make sure that the emergency vehicles can get there and everything like that. So there might be pots of money, I don't know. And then, what was the next one? Is there a filtration that goes to, if there, if there's gonna be water diverted, are we gonna have filtration that goes to that area, that's where all those egrids and everything live underneath that freeway interchange?
Yeah, if, uh, if we do end up constructing the storm treatment facility here.
Yeah.
You know, we'd anticipate using the kinds of plants and landscaping that's really friendly to, you know, egrids and other wildlife.
Yeah, cause that could just be a really big stinky mess if we don't take good care of it, I think.
Yeah.
Um, and then, um, the other question I had was, I never heard you say bottomless pipes before. And I was just curious, so we have a few of them, was it with this one? This project, am I remembering correctly? Oh, no, it was the next one, right?
Um, yes, Sayu Slaw Greenway.
The next one, that one. So how many of them are there?
I don't know for the whole network. I know when we find them, we try to do something about them, and that's a lot of why those two pipes got added to this project.
I, yeah, I'm just curious about if there's other ones lurking around, how we find them and just getting maybe an email or something? Just an update about... Cause it freaks me out a little bit to have that terminology. I know my husband would go crazy if we had a bottomless pipe at the house, you know what I mean? You know what I mean?
So on the 65th project, the TDT request that's going in front of the WCCC, is that the full amount, or is that just the TD? This can, that, it's a big chunk of money, so what's that actually covering as far as this project?
That would cover construction of most of the options that we can think of. The idea is to just make one request and have to go through the process once. So that's for, I think, up to $4 million for this particular project.
Yeah, so to Councilbrooks' question, it's coming out of Washington County TDT money to pay for that project. So that the transportation tax people pay to Washington County, it's funding that project.
I just was, if we can get more bait for a buck. The other thing is, I think it's in the census area, too. I mean, when I think of that area, it's like a census, you know, census tract area. So it just seems like if there's anything extra or bigger or something that Tualatin wants there, like a cover for the, the bus station or the bus stop or something like that, there might be ways of doing those things.
Okay.
Yeah. And then back on that, the pipe question.
Yeah.
The Public Works Department does go through and they have TV cameras, they actually put through pipes and can check and see what kind of condition they're in. Most of them are in a lot better condition than these two.
Okay.
So.
Is there a reason why these are, is it just that they're old, or are they, does water sit in them so it corrodes, or?
Some of it's pipe age, some of it's pipe type. They're corrugated metal, which tends to rust out faster than some of the other types of storm pipe. And some of it does, these are fairly flat pipes as well, so that may be why, maybe another factor.
I also have one other, is there any way besides like an actual bridge to lift? Like when you say that the road is lower than the creek, is there any way that you'd actually elevate the road so that you're not trying to slow things up? Like, you're an engineer, it just sounds a little...
Yeah, it's the, and it's actually the pipe outlet that's lower. The road is, you know, still several feet higher, but the pipe outlet ends up being a little lower than the creek bed. And, I mean, there are ways to lift up the road. The pipe could be related at a different elevation, which could be one way to address some of the issues. But we may be looking at something fairly big in this area to really make it work.
Yeah. All right, thanks.
Councilperson Pratt.
I would think looking at pipes or cameras is even worse than watching a city council meeting. I don't know. I'm asking, these are kind of like personal interests, but for my neighborhood, that Martinazzy to Sagert closure is going to affect us. But what I'm wondering is like, when I go down to my community garden by the church there, can I still use the sidewalk? Or will that all be closed?
It'll really depend on how much space is needed for the work that they're doing. If they can keep the sidewalk open.
They will.
That'll be the plan. Particularly when they're working like farther to the north, we'd be able to keep the southern part of the sidewalk open.
Okay.
But if it does get to the point where like the excavation's getting closer and closer to the sidewalk, and we don't feel like it'd be safe, then we'd have to close it.
Okay, that makes sense. And then, oh, I was just going to tell you, if you actually get where Martinazzy doesn't flood right there by Fred Meyer, you will be my personal hero.
Other questions are coming. Thanks, Mike.
All right, thank you.
So while Rachel's coming up, Councilbrooks mentioned the qualified census tract in that area. Actually, I think it's, Council Hilliard and I had a conversation not that long ago, and I realized, I found out that in 2024, that is no longer a qualified census tract. I have a bunch of data that I'm going to dig through to find out why my... Anecdotally, I think the new apartment complex down at Nyberg, the Tualatin Commons on the lake, or however, it's like, I can't remember the name exactly, that the income levels in that complex may have pushed the average outside of the QCT guidelines. But I was able to find a bunch of data that I haven't had a chance to dig through yet, but it's on my desk to look at. And I'll get back, I'll get with the council when I find out more.
Thank you for that information. I'm curious, too, there's still a lot of diversity there, so that could be a different way of looking at it. And I think that also that census was kind of a little interesting because of where we were and how it was taken. So anyway, those are my two wonderings, as you talked about that.
Yeah, they update those annually, qualify those areas annually, so we'll keep an eye on it. When I find out more, I'll get back with you.
Is the Bridgeport one still there?
The rest, so we had two.
Yeah.
The rest of the swath across the city, that is still QCT.
Thank you.
Public services night, so welcome, Rachel.
All right. Good evening.
A cool project.
You haven't heard enough about construction.
No, this is pretty cool. In-pipe micro hydro turbine project update. You know, Cheryl was all jazzed about this.
Me, too. So I'll kick it off by saying, I'm excited to bring a presentation to city council tonight about a project that we have had in the works for, it's been a while now. And that is for the installation of an in-pipe electricity generating micro turbine to be placed along an existing high-pressure water line right outside of our TCS facility here on 108th and Herman. Before we seek formal council approval to move forward on the project, I wanted to bring you an overview of it, what it is, including information about what we're looking to install, the benefits of the project, highlight some other users of this technology, discuss project costs and funding opportunities, and allow you to ask any questions that you may have. Ultimately, we are seeking approval from council on the consent agenda tonight at the regular council meeting to award a sole source contract for this, which will allow us to move forward on turning this idea into reality. So with that, okay, so I'll start with first, what is, what is In-Pipe? For clarification, In-Pipe Energy is a company that designs and manufactures micro hydro turbines. So as a very basic comparison, think of these as like little hydroelectric dams that are placed along a water line, capturing the energy generated from the natural flow of water and converting it into usable electricity. Here in Tualatin, we have a number of high-pressure water lines that run through our town, which is a, not necessarily a normal thing with most water systems. We have more, I would say, than most water systems have, so we are lucky with that. We don't have to do a ton of pumping, saves us money. But water moving through these lines is at a high, a pressure that's high enough, too high to serve to homes. Water in our distribution lines is slowed down using things called pressure-reducing valves. So a photo of one of these valves is shown on the top right of the slide. As you can see, they're located in vaults. That is the PRV that's located here outside of the TCS facility. So In-Pipe, as a company, has developed a micro turbine that essentially does the same thing as the pressure-reducing valve, but it captures the energy generated and converts it to electricity. This electricity is then net metered, or can be net metered, back into the PGE grid for use. So look at this picture, or this diagram on the slide to kind of illustrate what I'm talking about. So standard pressure-reducing valve is shown on the top. Basically, gravity-fed water supply comes in, it's slowed down by a pressure-reducing valve. Excess pressure just burns off as heat and noise in a normal situation, so it's not harnessed. And then, the pressure level is lowered, and the water continues on to homes and businesses so it doesn't blow out your faucet when you turn on the water. The NPRV, so in-pipes, micro hydro turbine, essentially does the same thing. So water is, comes in screaming hot, and instead of going through the pressure-reducing valve, the water is diverted around the valve. It goes through the micro hydro turbine, which slows down the water like a PRV would. The excess energy, instead of burning off into the atmosphere as nothing, is then captured, generated back into the electrical grid through a series. There's a panel and some other things that are, go into the sausage making. And then the water continues on to the rest of the water system. So essentially, it acts and places the pressure-reducing valve. In these applications, the pressure-reducing valve stays in place, it will still be in the vault in the ground. If that hydro turbine breaks down or it becomes non-functional, the PRV would then act as a backup. So it's actually kind of nice. But anyways, the installation of the PR, of the micro hydro turbine basically will be very non-not noticeable for the average water user, so it has little impact to our water distribution system on a, on a larger scale. So as mentioned, the electricity is net metered back into PGE's grid. Through an arrangement with PGE, the city is credited back for the electricity generated on our PGE bills each month. So it's a bit of like how if you have solar panels or something like that, there's net metering arrangements that are done with PGE, so you're credited back on your bill for the electricity generated. There's a few other different setups you can have for using the electricity generated, but for now, we're exploring the net metering as a simplified way to kind of do something with the electricity generated. The lifespan of, I'm actually going to go back on my slide. The lifespan of an in-micro hydro turbine is about 30 years, and ongoing maintenance requirements are very minimal. So we have an annual contract where someone comes in and look at, looks at all of the control valves in our system. They look at all the pilatry and make sure everything is greased up and working good and simplifying that. But it would be very similar to what that maintenance is every year that we do on the rest of our PRVs throughout the, the system. In-Pipe identified several sites around town where their turbines could potentially be installed. Based on a number of factors, the vault outside the TCS facility was selected as a prime site to move forward with plans for a turbine installation. So we're just looking at one, at least for now. There are other sites where it could potentially pan out, but we figured, let's start small with one and see how this goes. And so I'll stop there and make sure I've done an adequate job of explaining exactly what the in-pipe turbine is. And just to give you a general sense of how it works, so are there any comprehension questions of like, what is this? I'm a little unclear before I move on with the rest of the presentation, I figured I'd stop. We good? Okay, let's keep going. Okay. So this is a bit of a burgeoning technology. Hydro power isn't new, obviously, but the idea to generate electricity from water lines is gaining traction and starting to pop up in cities around the United States. So here's a few other users of in-pipes technology that we've connected with. I've spoken, and Nick has spoken with all of these people. They've all had good things to say about the operation of the turbines in conjunction with their water systems. They've talked to, about the low maintenance, they've talked about the electricity generation being on par with what the estimates were, so that was all good. And one user to highlight is the city of Hillsborough, so our neighbor. Their in-pipe application is located at Hillsborough Stadium up there on Highway 26, and it's been operational for a few years now. They are really happy with how, how it works, and they made a nice video that I want to highlight here. It's like three minutes long that I figured we could watch to give you kind of an idea of an application in one of our neighboring cities. So Bates, roll them. This partnership between the city of Hillsborough, Portland General Electric, Energy Trust of Oregon, and In-Pipe Energy has been a fantastic opportunity for all of us to make strides towards a more environmentally friendly power generation opportunity for our community.
This in-conduit hydropower project located in the vault below us will produce a little over 200,000 kilowatt-hours of clean renewable electricity per year. That electricity will be net metered against the Gordon Faber recreational complex, offsetting the electricity they need to power the lights and run the concessions. That's about the same equivalent as the electricity load of 20 Oregon homes per year, every year for decades to come.
Utilities typically use a lot of energy in the form of pumping, and that's to move water over long distances. Water's pumped up to a high point and stored in reservoirs, and then it flows by gravity to low points. The water is at a high pressure, too high for typical domestic and commercial uses, and so the pressure's reduced via friction. In this case, we're using a hydroelectric turbine to provide that friction and capture the electricity.
Water is the most important resource on the planet, but water agencies all over the world are struggling with aging infrastructure and rising costs. Water is also extremely energy-intensive, so as the cost of energy rises, so does the cost of water. So the city of Hillsborough, with the NPRV in place, is able to better manage their water while also reducing their costs due to energy. And for the rest of the planet, we're producing a new source of renewable energy, which reduces carbon and extends the life of infrastructure.
The city of Hillsborough is a growing community, and so for us to be able to pioneer, this practical new form of renewable energy allows us to meet our climate action goals, it helps us build resilience, and it helps us save the taxpayers money. And all of those things are part of our city's priorities and goals.
Honestly, me and all my friends and my generation of educated activists are just super happy the adults are hearing our voice and accepting that climate change is a huge priority. And hopefully, going on into the future, other cities and other companies can work forward to spread this new technology faster across the nation and fingers crossed, but all over the world.
As we look to a clean energy future and truly addressing climate change, it is going to take all of us, and it is going to take a tremendous amount of leadership and innovation. Being able to work with in-pipe energy on solutions such as the one for the city of Hillsborough is something that can be used as an example to many other jurisdictions, not only in Oregon, but across the country.
All right. Very feel-good.
You lost me at Callaway.
Yeah, I figured that was a good video. They could say most of the things probably more eloquently than I can, so. Back to the slide. So they spoke to this in the video, but to highlight some of the benefits of in-pipe, you know, it's a pretty cool and innovative project. And there's really tangible benefits that I think are worth pointing out beyond the fact, oh, this is cool. So from a construction perspective, this is a relatively minor project. Installation is short-term, it won't interfere with any operations of the city or the city's water distribution system, so that's, that's good. And it can be completed in a matter of weeks. So from a construction, it's pretty, pretty light lift. And as I said, it's not going to be a big lift from the maintenance side of things. The turbine needs minor annual maintenance over its 30-year lifespan. We've chatted with the other users of in-pipe, and they have confirmed this. Some of them have had the turbine installed for like several years now, and so they've confirmed that the maintenance is relatively minimal. I also like to point out that this isn't an action necessarily identified in the climate action plan, but I think it's clear that it could, can be considered a climate action initiative. So the turbine here in this application is estimated to generate 278,000 kilowatts of, kilowatt-hours of clean electricity each year. So as a comparison, that's enough to power around 25 homes for one year, based on, you know, average uses of electricity here in Oregon. That's certainly a win and a way to help move electricity use to a carbon-free generation source. So in a similar vein, it's really visible, it's a really innovative way to show our community that we're taking steps in climate action while also promoting cost efficiencies. And that brings me to kind of my last point, is that this proposed project has a number of external funding opportunities that we can pursue to lower the overall cost of the project through grants and incentives. There is a bunch out there. So this means that the savings earned from electricity generation and credits from PGE will essentially pay back the project after a few years, giving us a pretty quick return on our initial investment. Additional electricity credits generated after the payback period has been reached will be straight monetary savings for the city over the course of the turbine's life. So that leads me to the cost of the proposed project. Okay. So for the design, purchase, and installation of an in-pipe turbine, the proposed cost And yes, that is a lot. I saw that, and it's pretty high. But as I mentioned, there's a lot of external funding out there for renewable energy projects such as this. As part of the proposed cost, in-pipe energy will us, identify and help us apply for these external funding opportunities, which from a capacity standpoint is a really nice thing to have, that expertise. Some opportunities identified include receiving direct pay funds through the Federal Inflation Reduction Act, so that can be up to 40% of the project cost. Incentive funding from the Energy Trust of Oregon, which we pay into. Incentive funding from the Energy Trust of Oregon, which we pay into. Uh, grant opportunities from PGE, who obviously has a vested interest in in projects such as these, and additional grant opportunities from the Oregon Department of Energy and others. Um, to elaborate a little bit more on the payback period, I wanted to provide a hypothetical example for you to show how outside funding can significantly lower that payback period on the project. So the table on the slide kind of shows, all right. Does this have a pointer? Yeah, okay. So the cost of the project is six hundred ninety thousand dollars. Based on kind of what we know now, we're estimating that that would mean a payback period of eighteen years. So it'd take us eighteen years to recoup our initial investment. That's not great. Let's say we get forty percent direct pay from the Inflation Reduction Act, which is a very easy uh payment to get from the IRS. That would bring in two hundred seventy six thousand dollars. Um, uh, that would help bring the project cost down to four hundred and fourteen thousand and a payback period of twelve and a half years. That's better. Energy Trust of Oregon has a couple of incentives. There's predevelopment incentives that will help you with the design of the project, and then there's construction ready that will help you with more project costs for construction. Say we get those, that would bring it down to two hundred ninety thousand and a payback of nine years. And then let's say we get a commu- Community Renewable Energy Program grant money of even a hundred thousand dollars. That's a third of what we have the opportunity to apply for. That would bring our payback period down to six and a half years. This isn't all the grant opportunities out there. There's more. So as you can see, these grant opportunities really do add up, and they are really, really plentiful. I cannot stress that enough. Um, so without any funding, eighteen years isn't great. Um, but I do feel like there is a pretty high likelihood that we're going to receive something. As a safeguard, to ensure that this is a wise investment, we've written language into the proposed contract that allows us to back out and not go forward with construction if we don't reach a payback period of seven years or less. So that's something that we've written into the contract to kind of make sure that this is a good investment, that this isn't just something that we are going to have to pay for and get stuck with something that has a really high payback period. So I feel like that's a pretty big win for us in the contracting realm of this with InPipe. Okay. So ideally, this presentation has given you enough information about the proposed po- project, so you're able to consider our request to authorize a sole source contract with InPipe Inc. and Tapany Construction. We feel that a sole source contract is warranted in this case for a couple of reasons, including the fact that the energy recovery system used as part of InPipe's turbine is a is patent pending, so it's likely unavailable to to get elsewhere. Additionally, the unique design of the turbine allows for seamless integration with our water system, which is important to ensure that the presence of the turbine doesn't interfere with our primary goal of delivering water in our community. Um, and lastly, the fact that InPipe assists the city in obtaining the external funding for for the project is a huge benefit that can be really is a pivotal element of making the project be a success. So um, if you would like to proceed, there is a sole source authorization on consent agenda tonight, Resolution five seven seven eight dash two four. So with that, you may have questions, comments? I'm happy to answer now.
Questions, Rachel? Council Brooks? And then Council Reyes?
Thank you very much. It's very interesting. I love, I wonder who these people are because they obviously know about city water systems and the challenges around capacity and grant writing. So it's such a brilliant um model. Um, I'm curious how much, if it was today's money to power uh twenty four houses for a year, how much is that in dollars?
I have more information, more detailed information about the payback period, but with the net metering agreement, they assume that you will receive a credit, one for one, based on your electricity costs. So two hundred and seventy eight thousand is quite a bit. The payback period, i- it goes quick, and we're assuming in the payback period only a five percent annual increase on electricity costs. And so we know that PGE has historically had sometimes quite a bit higher electricity rate increases than that. So five percent was was a pretty conservative estimate. Um, with the payback period, we're also conservative on that. So um, we have been conservative on estimating how much the electricity use at this site is potentially going to increase over the next, you know, ten, fifteen years uh as our use of electric fleet increases and things like that. So even on an operational standpoint, the payback period could end up being better, but we figured it was smarter to go a little bit more conservative in those estimates, so.
I'm just curious if if we weren't going to the payback period and we were just getting dollars today, how much that, whatever number it was, translates into dollars for a year?
I will have to send it, two hundred and seventy eight thousand kilowatt hours. And I know Nick's watching on Zoom land. He may be able to, but it's it's upwards of like forty thousand or more dollars per year.
When I talk to Cheryl and it would pay for the electricity for this building for the year.
Yeah.
It will completely cover the electricity generated at this building and then some.
Yeah, I just wonder how much that is. I'm just wondering that. So that would be interesting to me to find out.
Absolutely. I can send a, I can send much more information on the payback period. If you want to chime, Nick, and I'm sure he has the payback period pulled up on his computer because we have more information about it that I didn't include in the presentation.
Okay, so.
Here's Nick.
Hey!
Hey!
Am I there? I can't see myself.
You're there.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, Council, Nick Westendorf, Deputy Public Works Director. Um, assuming the current residential rate, which is just over nineteen cents per kilowatt hour, that uh that value is just under fifty five thousand dollars a year.
Thank you.
No problem.
And then I'm just curious if um if it does work and there's potent- more potential, how many more units could we potentially integrate into the system?
So InPipe came out, and they did a tour of our water system with our water superintendent, Terrence Leahy, and I believe they identified seven or eight sites that could potentially be good candidates based on an infrastructure standpoint for um and a a micro hydro turbine. Um, one of the biggest things that was a little bit of a limiter is that the proximity to a site like TCS that is electricity generating, that's what makes this the prime site. Other sites from an infrastructure standpoint, yeah, they can generate a ton of electricity, and it could be metered back into the system. But the fact that we have a site right here that you can net meter and get the credit for, that's what was the selling point for this site. Some of the rules around the PUC and net metering and all the selling back of electricity are a little bit limiting for this application. Those rules may change in the future, and these may be a little bit more widespread, and it may be a little bit more financially advantageous for us to put these in other sites. That's not to say there's not other sites that we could utilize these at and and receive some good net metering benefits back. One of those, it could be the new um reservoir and pump station site up at the ASR. That could potentially be a candidate for a second one. We figured we would start small with one, consider it a pilot, see how it goes, see how much external funding we can get. But there definitely are are multiple other sites that could that could take one of these because we have lots of high pressure water lines here in Twallington.
I think it's great. And then um, and I guess too, part of my question about that too is the Infrastructure Act money. Um, I don't know when that, how long that's available. So I'm just curious as far as um the potential application of more when that cost, you know, benefit analysis, where it takes us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The time is very ripe right now because all of those opportunities are coming, and there there are a lot of grant and opportunities out there that that we could take advantage of with this that have a pretty, pretty low barrier to entry. So and not a lot of reporting requirements and things like that. So that'll make Dawn happy from a finance perspective, so.
Yeah, uh, yeah, for me, it's like, you could even do more someday.
Council Reyes and Council Gonzalez. Remember, we only have about fifteen minutes left.
Um, thank you. I um really interested in this whole project. Um, I might have missed all this, and I just wanted to clarify because I I know there are people out there that are listening, but um and myself, but I still need to understand it a little bit. Um, so what you're saying is that once we try this, that electricity that's generated from that would find, it will pay for the electricity of this location right here.
Correct.
How soon is that? As soon as when you install it, when can we start?
It'll start generating electricity.
Right on.
The second we turn it on.
Excellent, okay.
And it'll be net metered, so at this point, it will be net metered back into the grid.
Okay.
There could, and I don't want to get, put the car before the horse, Nick's smiling, but there could then be a potential at a maybe a later date, not necessarily as part of this project, but there could then be another later potential to create a micro grid onsite here that the turbine could directly power the site from the electricity generated. That could be a potential future. But at this point, the turbine's installed, it spins, it creates the electricity, it then feeds back into PGE's grid that's out here. There's kind of two grids that come together right in this area. We've come to find out. Um, and it'll just go back into the grid. And we will be credited on a one for one basis on the electricity that is generated, so.
Okay. And the other question is, um, when you give, when you say you would, uh, you can power up to twenty something homes, um, does that mean you're s- you're selling the electricity to those homes, right?
Not necessarily. It's just a comparison basis. It goes back into the grid. It powers things on the grid. It's not necessarily like it's going to specifically be for these twenty five homes. It's just a comparison. But we are getting financial and payment, essentially, credit from PGE for the electricity that is generated, so.
Okay, thank you. And one more question is, um, what is, what could possibly interrupt something like this? That is so, sounds so perfect.
You know, let's say the turbine breaks down. Let's say something happens. It's not dependent on electricity to run, so let's say there's a big power outage. It would still run. Let's say there's something that happens, um, you know, externally here at the building, like a big fire or something like that. It would still run. It could be damaged. And so in that instance, that's why I felt like it was important to call out that the the pressure reducing valve there in the system will continue to work. If there's a disruption to our water system, let's say there's a huge water main break out here on Herman Road, and the pipe that feeds this turbine is broken, and we've got, you know, old faithful, a big geyser coming out with all this water. That potentially could disrupt the operation of of the hack micro turbine. But at that point, that's, that's not our main concern if the turbine doesn't necessarily work. So the fact that the turbine is there and the existing pressure reducing valve will remain in place to act as a backup, that's the most important point to make there.
Thank you.
Council Gonzalez?
Thank you. This is very exciting, but I I do have some concerns. So this is proprietary technology, one sole contributor. Um, like many projects we've done in the past in the city, like the Parks Parks projects, that uh, what kind of funding are we going to have in place for repairs should things go out? So what is your in, I know it's hard to guess, but what is your projected estimated cost on maintaining this as we go forward? Because we install it now, we're almost indebted in the future council, the future city people to deal with these repairs. So what do you think about that?
It's a good question. It's one that I think we should probably do a little more homework on of let's say a a major component of the turbine breaks down. The there's a warranty on this project, but it's only a one year warranty.
One year.
And so I think your question is a fair one. If this were to break down, what could the repairs look like? What, I I would think that we would have to compare that with what the potential earnings are as the life's li- lifespan of the turbine continues. Let's say it's a five thousand dollar repair. That's something that we have budgeted operationally or could budget for operationally. If it's going to be a three hundred thousand dollar repair to completely rebuild the thing, that's a little bit different.
I I would like to see the ROI to include a a budgeted estimate for repairs to be included because that would be factual. It goes out, here's whatever, a hundred thousand dollars to repair. Then instead of doing the seven year enticing ROI, it's probably not ten years because of the estimated cost. Um, one other thing that 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 is part of that, that would be a benefit to the climate action plan. Here we would be looking at fronting the six hundred ninety eight thousand dollars, or let's just say the after all the credits and everything like that, a hundred and fifty thousand really would come. You know, right now, without any additional effort other than um, we can provide uh water credits for smart controllers for homeowners. And that would be an upward upward of thirty five percent savings in the water utilities for our constituents. Because right now, this power would be for the city, not for constituents. And so as we're looking for mass savings for our constituents, I think that uh smart controllers and those types of credits would be a greater benefit to Twallton residents because they would impact ma- basically everybody who waters the lawn. This is only for city benefit, not for constituent benefits because the power generated, I understand it is a taxpayer, we pay it as well. But a climate action plan would save water right now if we were to look into those kinds of credits versus this innovative technology, which is exciting, it truly is. Um, so I am concerned about that, that we shouldn't be looking at these constituent savings now. This is a future investment uh that that is, sounds good, and it is, it's nice. But it's power savings built for the city. Um, I would be interested in those kinds of measures put forward versus this right now. But do look into the um ROI to include uh reserves money to repair this technology because we have not done that in the past. And going forward, based on the budget discussions we've had, that was a concern that we're not allowing dollars for that, so. Thank you.
Thanks.
Other questions? Council President Pratt?
Um, well, I think this is a great idea, and it looks like it's going to pay off. And I also think that Council Gonzalez is proposing is a great idea, but I just see him as two separate things that are both great and impactful for our climate.
Move along. Council President, Councilor Brooks?
My my one other question, and I keep thinking about parks and stuff too. I remember seeing similar designs with irrigation systems with um like spinning turbines within them. And I was just curious if there's other ways to link together um water, other kind of innovative water um power systems throughout the city? Eventually, I mean, to think through. That's it.
Anything else? Alright, thanks, Rachel.
Thank you. If you have any further questions, feel free, you can email them to us.
Uh, that brings us to uh Council Agenda Review. I've got Council Hillier is up for the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. And then, do anyone have questions on the consent agenda? Want anything removed? Council Gonzalez?
I think right now that uh that we were asked to adopt um what what just proposed, I think I would like to see some more reserve repair dollars in the ROI before I move forward with with that adoption, with that blanket approval.
So then you want the item removed?
I would like that moved, just for that reason only. I mean, I'm excited about it, but I want to see some true numbers based on our budget discussions we've had on allowing reserved money for repairs for for projects. Then I like to see that first.
Right, just so you know, because it'll be removed from consent, but we're still going to vote on it. So it'll be just a separate vote, okay? Uh, and then I have two proclamations. Uh, one is pollinate a group, and I know who's wanted to do that. Who would like to do the Juneteenth proclamation? So Council Hillier would do the Juneteenth. Uh, we don't have enough time for the roundtable, so we'll go ahead and close uh the work session, and we'll start back up with our regular meeting in about six minutes. See you then.